Thank you, Madam Chair, School Board Members, Superintendent, and ladies and gentlemen. To the agenda item 9.01A, I would like to thank the Superintendent for her leadership, finally listening to the community, and putting together an order for guidelines of guest speakers into the school district. I think Madam Chair needs to follow that leadership in a school board meeting in the very near future, and ensuring that it becomes a policy, which is a very good start. Later, I will talk about a specific organization in general comments hall. We serve those comments. Until then, thank you.
Thank you.
This is actually not pertaining to guest speakers. It's pertaining to the CARE.
Yes, ma'am. So that's CARE is the same issue?
Thank you. Good afternoon, School Board Members. My name is Bonnie Reynolds, and I am a member of the Education Coalition. Here are my questions and thoughts directed to the School Board members who voted against the public workshop regarding the issue of CARE in our Hillsborough County public schools. Why? Why would you allow CARE, a known terrorist organization, the ability to have access to our children in our schools? Terrorism is a way, is a major concern in America today, and it has changed our lives in a variety of ways. Feeling and knowing its threat at a local level is not something that we can take lightly or casually dismiss. Just as our nation has taken steps to establish policies for the security of its people, so too, it's our time to act and rise. Why? Why would you fail to act upon voices of concern? We are not, and we have no intention of accusing, or holding negligent, or disrespecting any county educator or this administration. We are simply and respectfully asking this question now: Why do you ignore the facts presented, silence legitimate concern, and vote against a public hearing to establish a policy to ensure our children's protection? Why would you not institute a policy to safeguard our students, guaranteeing no representative of any organization has been linked to terrorism by the federal government, or is ever invited into a Hillsborough County classroom? As well spoken as in previous board meetings by one member, I quote, "Anywhere we can tighten up protection for our students is important." Why? Why then would you not unite with like minds and together proceed forward with a policy to make this happen? Thank you.
All those issues that are coming to the fore and that are of concern, this is your chance if you wish to speak. Okay, Philip Reynolds. Go ahead.
All right, thank you. Hi, my name is Philip Reynolds. I'm currently a high school student in Hillsborough County. Just on the issues of CARE and the whole organization, I'd just like to read some quotes of some of the leaders in the group and members. Juar Sadala Badran, he's a member, he said Hamas and Hezbollah are committing acts of defense against Israel's only weapons that we have are two strap bombs, two antibodies, and do whatever damage we can. I'm sorry, that just doesn't sound very peaceful and a good thing to bring into a classroom with people like that in the group. Parvez Ahmed said that Hamas and Hezbollah should be part of the political process. I don't think so, considering they're a terrorist organization. They really probably shouldn't be in our education. Randall Todd Royer was their civil rights coordinator, and he was sentenced to 20 years in prison for his activities within the Virginia Jihad Network. Ahmed Bedir, the president of CARE's Tampa United Voice for America, said that "We want the government to fear us." Afta Ahmed Ali said Hamas is not a terrorist organization. He is executive director for CARE Florida, and I'm sorry, the last I checked, I think Hamas is a terrorist organization. And Hasla Yusuf Pan San said that "The false gods of this society are Jesus, democracy, and the Bill of Rights." Excuse me, but that's what this country was founded on? I don't think we have a [inaudible]. So, in that closing, I'd just like to mention that I, as a student, feel strongly that it is not safe to our CARE, into our classrooms, considering the type of leadership they have and who they're associated with. Thank you.
Madam Chair and Board Members, I thank you for this opportunity to have my say on this. I'm an ordained American Baptist minister and hospital chaplain, V and Fire Department chaplain. I was a preschool child in suburban Chicago when our nation, due to fear engendered by World War II, incarcerated thousands of Japanese citizens. I eventually came to know one of these victims. Reverend Jitsuo Lawakawa was a pastor of the Japanese Baptist Church in Chicago. He and his family, along with members of his congregation, were placed in detention camps. Later, he became the leader of evangelism work of the American Baptist Churches. It took decades for our nation's knowledge that we had overreacted and mistreated in thousands of American citizens. I thought that perhaps we had learned from our mistakes and would never fall into the trap of ostracizing a whole segment of our society because of the actions of some people. Now I see groups attempting to demonize thousands of people because they're Islamic. Islam is, along with Judaism and Christianity, one of the three religions that stem from a shared history.
Thank you.
I was a DA chaplain for 18 years, and I had to learn about Islam, so I could better ministry to insert and deal veterans that are American citizens in our Islam. Following that, I was working at a Kraus Hospital, managing chaplain. I had three Protestant ministers, a priest, a nun, a rabbi, and an imam. That way, we could cover the people that were in that hospital. This is the way it seems to me that we should all be working together, not only in chaplaincy, but in many areas of our life. As a volunteer firefighter for 44 years...
Finish your thought.
I'll jump to the end. I know what my grandchildren and my grandchildren's grandchildren select their history books and find that in the second decade of the 21st century, we made the same mistake again of demonizing a whole segment of our society.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Fauzi Elmond, and the next five will be Carol Barker, Mohammed Burkitt, and I know I'm going to start mispronouncing names, and I apologize, Hamza Elmond, Rahma Elmond, and John Melendez. Mr. Elmond.
Thank you. I would like to start by thanking you all, thanking you for being there for our kids, thanking you for all the efforts that you do for our kids. My name is Fauzi Elmond. I am a father of four, two of them attending Hillsborough County schools, two are attending the Islamic schools. Before I start, I would like to take your permission. I would like for all those who support the Muslim community in Tampa, who are here in Hillsborough County, and those who support CARE to stand up and show us their presence. Just to comment on what has been already heard, if those people don't know what terrorism is, and if those people don't know what CARE is all about, they won't be here. CARE is not a terrorist organization. CARE is an organization that's trying to bring both Christians, Muslims, Jews, to sit together on a table and understand, understand Islam, understand what Muslims and Islam is all about. My little one, Hamza, goes to Benito Middle School. He comes home during Christmas. He brings all that Dad's been told, all that's been said about Christmas, and we sit down with him, and we enjoy learning more about Christmas. He does the same thing when Hanukkah is there, and he does the same thing for whatever the teacher asks him to say about Islam. This is the beauty of this country. We enjoy it. We love it. We are here, citizen. We're going to stay here. We're going to live here. You need to accept us, and that starts with our children. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Carol Barker. I'm a Christian. I live here in Tampa. I am here because I believe in children learning. I believe in young people learning about the world and the people around us, and the realities around us, and I believe that we should not be afraid of people who are different than us. We should be curious. We should be hungry for information. I recommend having experts come into the schools and tell us about things so that our children might know more of the facts. I am a Christian, but I do not force Christianity on anyone else. I share my beliefs, and other people may share theirs, but we don't have to protect ourselves by putting so much distance between ourselves and that which may be different than ourselves. I highly recommend CARE coming to the schools and providing good information on a religion that is practiced by so many people in this world and in this country. Thank you for hearing me, and please let's work against xenophobia.
If you wonder what it is, find out. Mohammed, I'm going to say this wrong, Richard. Please correct me when you get to the podium.
My name is Ahmad Ershid. I would like to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to talk here. I know the School Board is not set up to check facts, but you can quote me on what I'm saying and check whoever would like to check the facts of other, especially the young gentleman who talked about his school. There are a lot of facts that need to be checked. There are a lot of statements that need to be checked. They're not facts. I would like to give you a little bit story about myself. I came from Syria in 1984 for college, after finishing high school, finished college here, and then worked in this country for several years as a professional for big corporations and small corporations, and then I opened my own business. During this time, I get married and have children. My children are all in honor classes. My son, 19, the oldest, he is third year in college, and he is 19, and he's in the honor role, the same as the other children that I have. They attended Lewis Elementary School in Temple Terrace, attended Benito Middle School in New Tampa, and worked in high school. And now, the oldest is in college, as I said. This is a typical story for people from my generation who came to this country. And I came here to emphasize the point that I don't like the fact that somebody is painting me with the same picture as everybody else. There are some radical groups that are out there that we all know that we do not agree with, we do not support, but to paint me with the same brush and put me in the same frame, I resist that, and I came here to defend my kids who go to public school and to clarify this. When CARE goes to, or anybody goes to public schools to clarify this, this is something that's good for the community to bring ties together.
Thank you. Hamza Elmond. Hamza Elmond.
It doesn't give me any pleasure to have to come down today. I actually have two daughters in Hillsborough County School. I'm a graduate of the Hillsborough County School system myself, of Lato. Few words: transparency, liberty, communication. The latest issue is just the third, actually, issue I've heard in Hillsborough County schools that has raised my eyebrows, a father with children in elementary school. I won't bring up the other two issues at this time. I don't want to cloud the discussion. But I will say that, you know, having grown up in Tampa, I remember a time in Ebor City when there were clubs down there, and I remember skinheads fighting, and, you know, basically it was a problem. And as much as I disliked that word, "skinhead," and what they stood for, we do live in America, and the justice system took care of the issues at that time. And so what I want to talk about during this opportunity is, as a father, I'm concerned about the process, transparency, and notification. I would just, I would be no happier if the Westboro Baptist Church came to our school and spoke about their issues. I would not be happy, even as a gun owner, if the NRA came and spoke at the behest of a teacher. I might agree with some of what they discussed, but I have friends who don't own guns, and they probably would be offended by that. Our kids are there to learn, and they're there to learn under your curriculum, so I can't understand why. I hope there's a process that will be appropriate so that as parents, we know who's come to speak to our kids, because I'm not saying that I would pull them out if this happened again, but I do want to be informed, and please set up that process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elmond. See you.
My name is Ziyat Taha. I would like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you. I would like to thank all of you for serving our students and serving the community. I have a daughter who's in the 90th grade who attends a public school. It's very important for her to learn about the cultures and religions from the right sources. Ignorance is the enemy of this country and every country. History is something already happened. We cannot change it, but we have to learn from it. Islam existed since the creation of Adam. It is submitting the will, your will, and everybody's will to God. We cannot ignore it, and it is positive contributions to the civilization over the years. We need to teach our students about diversity. God created us in nations and tribes, so we may learn and know each other. If we teach our students about Hinduism, we bring a Hindu. What's wrong with bringing a Muslim to teach about Islam? What's wrong with that? They need to learn from the right source. Our society has Muslims, Christians, Jews, Hindus, everybody, even atheists. The students should learn the truth about their neighbors from the right source. Moses, Prophet Moses, peace be upon him, said in Exodus 2015 in the Ten Commandments, "You shall not give a false testimony against your neighbor." And I have seen people here earlier, they gave false testimony about our neighbors about CARE. If CARE is a terrorist organization, our government would shut it down a long time ago. Jesus, peace be upon him, said, "Jesus said, 'The greatest commandment of them all: Love your God and your neighbor.'" Mohammed, peace be upon him, he said, "You are not a believer. If you go to bed and sleep, and your neighbor is hungry, and you know it." That's what we have to learn. Thank you very much. I have some more, but thank you very much.
Tom Tanner. And Bob Dickerson will be next.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and I respect you, and maybe I...
Get the mic closer, so as close as you can. I know it's hard when you're at that...
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for allowing me a moment or two here. I would like to just express myself with regard to trying to understand, as a citizen, as a leader in the community, as a person who's worked with children for a number of years myself, both in the educational system and in the religious system. I'm trying to understand objectively, as much as I can, about this situation, and I appreciate very much, Superintendent, your efforts to bring forth a workable solution. It's not my desire to be an antagonist with regard to any other religion. I believe in respecting everyone for their religion, but I also believe that other religions need to respect my religion, and I think it's only fair to expect that. I have a problem. I've done a little research, just moderate research, and I have a problem with some of the things I found out about CARE. And it would seem to me that if Muslims want to express themselves in a way that is easily respected by Christians, Jews, and every other religious group, that they would not want a group that was in question. If I were being represented by...
Finish your thought, please. Starting...
If I wanted representation for Christianity, the last group I'd want would be the Ku Klux Klan members representing Christianity.
Bob Dickerson.
Yes, firstly, I'd like to thank everyone for giving me the opportunity to speak, and Madam Superintendent, I really appreciate the fact that you brought this forward. Repeat to be commended, and I'm sure the board will follow through, knowing what the community's thoughts are. Firstly, I'd just, I'd like to say that this discussion that's taking place today will continue to make sure that Hillsborough County has the best educational system possible, and that educational system would be consistent with our American culture. Thank you.
Thank you, Mohammed. Gazi Ahmed.
Hi, Mr. Board. Thank you very much for standing up for the right thing. My name is Gazi Ahmed. I came from Yemen 1993. I worked in Detroit for an automotive company for 13 years. We built cars for this country. I've gotten tough in Detroit. I had to move to Tampa, and I dealt with CARE in Detroit. It's a well-known organization, not supporting anything, they're against the religion or against the religion. And I have three kids. They're going to grow up here, and they're going to go to school here, and they're going to learn everything here from other religions, from other cultures, and they're going to bring it home to me and the mother, and we'll have to accept it. We'll have to deal with it. We have to work together here, not attack each other. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Goldbaum, and while you are coming up, the next five will be Kimberly Kelly, Sean Kelly, Linda Skempres, Joan Evans, and Atilio Corbo, and please correct my pronunciation if I've gone... Thank you, welcome.
Thank you. I'm Larry Goldbaum. I do the radio show in Clearwater called The Prescription Addiction Radio Show, Breaking the Silence. As you all know, we have a serious drug epidemic in this community that we live in. I got to know Hassan Sibley through the radio station. Hassan has appeared on the show called Muslim Street. That's the radio show before mine on Sunday nights. Muslim Street's a great show for community outreach and dialogue, and I'm assuming most of the people in this room have never heard of Muslim Street Radio. My point, my point in this is Hassan Sibley and Malik Aziz, and Malik does the show Muslim Street, have reached out, and they've said this area has a drug problem, and we want to do something about it. Hassan Sibley is reaching out to the community to bring understanding and dialogue this community needs. Hassan Sibley has demonstrated to me only positive comments and actions for this community. Hassan Sibley has illustrated compassion and caring for our entire community. I want to thank you, Board Members, for standing strong against negative comments and actions against a minority religion in our area. I'm here to let you know that my positive interactions with Hassan Sibley and the Muslim community have been exemplary. I think they warrant your attention. As for the speakers I'm hearing, some of the speakers, it saddens me that any attention is focused on attempting to bring division within our community. Please remain strong and bring an awareness, understanding, and education to our differences and common goals. I'm proud to stand here for Hassan Sibley, and I hope he has the opportunity to share his information with more people in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goldbaum. Kimberly Kelly. Welcome, Ms. Kelly.
Good to see you guys again. How are you? I want to thank you guys for bringing this agenda item. It's much appreciated, and we look forward to having this discussed and hearing your views. But as I'm listening to this, I asked you a question in the very first board meeting I was at. Why don't the speakers have to go through SERV? Why? This is about protection to our children. I'm not talking about the Islam faith. I want someone in there to speak to my child about that. I don't want the speaker that was there to. He is not an imam. He's not a cleric. He didn't study that in school. That's not his specialty. That's where I'm coming from. We need to look at the credentials that we're allowing to have there. I know the parents out here are concerned both sides, but my concern is for the protection of all our children, and I'm tired of hearing them come up here and say, "Thank you, Board, for taking my side. Thank you so much." This isn't about sides. This is about America, Hillsborough County, our school system, and if you don't think that what CARE is pushing is dangerous, let me tell you something. I received an email from someone else the other day. They're so worried about HB 1209 up in Tallahassee. They sent an email. You know what HB 1209 protects? Our Constitution. That's what this is about. This is about someone coming in, teaching what they're supposed to be teaching, and not expressing any other viewpoints, or teaching them what should be taught. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly.
This is the third meeting that I've attended, and I can't be silent anymore. I don't know if it's ignorance, or arrogance, or a little of both that I'm experiencing, but let me attempt to make clear what our objective here is. We're not looking to stifle educators or put them in a box. We're looking for clear boundaries, and we're looking for a little bit of common sense. In a classroom, Mr. Sibley asked a question, "Don't you want to know about terrorism? Don't you want your children to know about terrorism?" The answer is yes. I just don't want it taught by CARE. I want it taught Nazism, but I don't want it taught by the Aryan Brotherhood. In the last board meeting, Board Member Edgcombe expressed concerns that the NAACP would be targeted next unless they're funding rockets and bombs somewhere. That's a ludicrous argument, and it's designed to inflame and divide. This is not about race, and it's not about religion. It's about protecting our children from a group that advocates hate and violence to settle their differences. CARE is known for this. We didn't put them on the terrorist watch list. The government did.
Amen.
It's hard to believe that we did not find any better representation for Islam than Look around at the people here in the faces, because you're going to see them again in election time, and you're going to hold them accountable for their will. Thank you.
You don't need to wait to be called. Linda Skempres is next, then Joan Evans, then Atilio Corbo. Just, you know, the next person's welcome to just come right up.
Hello. CARE used to work with the FBI until it was discredited by the FBI. The issue is CARE, not Islam. Don't confuse one with the other. CARE is an organization that protects terrorism and is against any free speech against them and the terrorists they protest. The FBI does not trust CARE. They want to speak at high schools. They like to intimidate. You on the board are being intimidated by CARE. Why do you allow Sibley? Why not allow Sibley to speak for Islam? Why not a local Imam? Political correctness has taken the front seat to everything these days. Everyone is afraid to ascend. CARE is a front for Hamas, according to the FBI. CARE speaks for Hamas. The five people on the board are allowing this out of fear of political correctness, or they might have received a phone call, who knows? The CARE people know Allah the way my cat knows a mouse. CARE apologizes for terrorism. Shame on you. The five who caved to political correctness, all they wanted at the last meeting was to have a workshop with parents and Mr. Sibley. I believe in free speech. Too bad Hamas, I mean CARE, doesn't. Also, back in 2007, there was a televangelist who spoke on WTOG-TV, Live Prayer with Bill Keller. It was canceled. The station and its parent company, CBS, received the letter. Earlier this month, CARE asked CBS executive to remove Keller's nightly talk show from Channel 44. The CBS-owned station asked, well, anyway, the group was upset about a recent broadcast by Keller that disparaged Islam and the Prophet Muhammad.
Thank you, ma'am. Joan Evans.
Prior to President Obama speaking at the first day of school to students, parents and teachers had concerns as to the content of the speech and lessons plans he was to give them. At that time, the President of the United States published his speech prior to his telecast to the children. Some parents kept their children home. Parents requested children not be present during this telecast. Now, the board has to answer to how they can approve of any organization to speak without the approval of parents, with full knowledge that CARE is most controversial as it has been associated with terrorist organizations and money laundering. Thank you.
Thank you, Attilio Corbo. The next five speakers are Mustafa Dondosli, Genevieve Lacavallemele, Dr. Chandresh Saraya, Michael Weston, and Reverend Bernice Powell Jackson.
Good afternoon, thank you. CARE was founded in June 1994 under the tentacles of the Muslim Brotherhood. And this I got from the website Council on American Islamic Relations. The Muslim Brotherhood is not an organization that is a proven friend of the United States of America or the non-Muslim world. So how can we allow our school system to allow CARE to come into our schools and talk to our students, to tell them or teach them about CARE, Islam, or the Muslim countries? Presently, the Hillsborough School District has 91% of its schools leveled at an A or B, and under the new state ruling that was being worked on today, it may be down to 47% of the people whose students will be in an A or B level. And you want to waste our children's time having them instructed on a subject that should not be allowed until Christianity can be discussed. Once people of Islamic faith learn to live with others of different faiths in their own Muslim countries with respect and religious tolerance, then I can change my beliefs and feel for them and for them coming into our schools. If our government will not let any Christian discussion, emblems, or prayers in the classrooms, then why must we allow Islam? Government and the school system is responsible to its people, so please be responsible to us and respect our wanting that CARE not be allowed to come in and be instructed in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mustafa Dondosli, Genevieve Lacavallemele, and Dr. Chandresh Saraya.
My name is Genevieve Bell.
Sorry, is Mustafa Dondosli not here?
I'm sorry, could I?
Well, you can go ahead, and then we'll have him. I just, I'm trying to keep track. Go ahead, that's fine, no problem.
My name is Genevieve Bell, and I have three children that attend Hammond Elementary School in Augusta. I am here today to discuss my oldest, Madison, who is in fifth grade.
I'm sorry, ma'am, we are only talking about CARE and guest speakers right now. You're talking, and I-
They told me at the entrance, I'm just here to question your magnet program at Walker Middle School.
Mustafa Dondosli.
My name is Mustafa Dondosli. Unlike a lot of these people here, I actually don't have any students at Hillsborough County. One of the reasons I came to Hillsborough County is I understand they're very accepting, they're very open, and at the root of this issue is education. Now, one day, if I started to settle down here, maybe have kids, I'd really like my kids to be in an open and accepting atmosphere. And like I said, at the root of this is the issue of education. Now, nobody's advocating prayer in schools, et cetera, all of this. All that we're asking is for free and open education. Now, Christianity is taught in the schools, just as-
Well, please be respectful of all the speakers.
I was quiet when you guys were speaking, so please be quiet.
They didn't like.
So like I said, I just want, I just want there to be free and open education. Now, I don't believe there's a problem with CARE. CARE is a very, they're a nonprofit organization, they're very open, they fight for civil rights, something that we seem to be liking a lot in today's society. Again, I don't want to take a lot of your time, but I just wanted to point out that, again, education is key here, and it's at the heart of this debate, and there really should not be a problem with CARE coming in and merely offering information. They're not offering hate, they're not offering, they're not trying to convert anybody. They're just offering information, and if people can't accept that information, then perhaps public school isn't for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dondosli. Dr. Saraya, Dr. Saraya not here. Reverend Bernice Powell Jackson, and I'm going to call the next five. Larry Goldbaum, Mel Underbakey, Bishop Chuck Lee, Joyce Hamilton Henry, and Reverend Russell Meyer. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you for the opportunity to be here today. I am Reverend Bernice Powell Jackson. I serve as a local church pastor here in Hillsborough County, but I also serve as the President of the World Council of Churches for North America. In both capacities, I've had many occasions to work across faith lines, including with many members from the Muslim community. Here in Tampa, our church has worked with CARE for many years, both preceding Mr. Sibley's time as Executive Director and including the time that he's been here. Both Mr. Sibley and CARE have worked hard to open lines of communication with the Muslim community and to educate non-Muslims about a faith that too many of us are ignorant about. That ignorance has led to stereotyping and misunderstanding across our nation and across our world. In my role as President of the World Council of Churches, I have had the opportunity to co-moderate a planning committee for an international Christian-Muslim consultation which was held in 2010. One of the many things that came out of that meeting of Christian and Muslim leaders from around the world were the commitment to expanding educational opportunities about each other's faith. Thus, CARE is a perfect organization to help do this work, and we are blessed to have them as a part of our communities. The fact is that there are more than a billion Muslims in our world and perhaps 2 billion Christians, and we must learn how to get along, or our world will not survive. To use Dr. King's words, "Men often hate each other because they fear each other. They fear each other because they don't know each other. They don't know each other because they cannot communicate. They cannot communicate because we are separated." If Tampa wants to be a world-class city, then it must encourage education about different religions. And to have students graduate from our school system without such education means our students will not be equipped for 21st century leadership. Thank you, Bernice.
Thank you, Reverend Dondosli. Larry Goldbaum. Mel Underbake or Underbakey? Okay. Bishop Chuck Lee. Okay. Are you Mel Underbakey?
Good afternoon, and thank you for allowing me to speak. And as I said, I'm Mel Underbakey, and I'm the Director of Friends of Human Rights, and we've worked with CARE for many years now, both locally and nationally, and it's really a wonderful organization, it's very moderate, definitely does not support terrorism, they support civil liberties, and they support understanding between cultures. And I have worked with Hassan Sibley for also, and he's also wonderful to work with, and he's very knowledgeable, he's very well-spoken, and I'm just happy to have him in my community. And I'm also a former educational researcher, so I've known Dr. Luciano for a lot of years, and she's, I'm sure you know, she's a wonderful teacher, one of the better or innovative teachers I've ever known, and she's very dedicated to teaching her students. And so because of knowing them, I'm just very surprised, and I must say shocked at the attack against these people. And I think the reaction of misinformed groups shows the need for them to continue what they're doing, and the need for diversity education. And I wanted to come here today to thank you all for supporting, you know, standing up against bigotry and hatred and ignorance. So again, thank you very much, and please continue.
If by some chance anyone is here who signed up online and has not checked in, let's do that. Bishop Lee, welcome.
I'm Bishop Chuck Lee, I'm President of the Heart Council of Churches, and I'm a Board Member of the National Council of Churches. But more importantly, I've lived in Tampa all my life, and both my father and grandfather were, came up through the Hillsborough County school system, and it served them well. And it's a system that despite all kinds of roadblocks has educated children and done it well. And I think in these difficult economic times, where you have all kinds of budget restraints, I'm really grateful that you take every opportunity to use all the resources you can to educate our children for the future, for a very difficult time that's coming ahead. They need to know all they can about all the different cultures that are in America so that they can bring about a society where we respect and care for one another. Using the opportunity you have to bring Islamic speakers into school, it's really something wonderful, and I'm grateful. You know, I know times are hard, and it's hard to get the kind of education for our children that you would like, using these resources that in this case were free for Islam, and I don't think he's a terrorist, of course. And I do know that, I'm no better at myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Bishop Lee. Joyce Hamilton Henry. Welcome.
Thank you, good afternoon. My name is Joyce Hamilton Henry, and I'm the Director of the Mid-Florida Regional Office of the ACLU based in Tampa. I applaud you for allowing this open discourse of this very important issue. We at ACLU, the U.S., we should not be afraid of learning about other viewpoints. In the classroom, if a classroom isn't a safe place to exchange ideas without interference, what is? Where is? We are in support of open dialogue, free from stereotype and prejudice. Embrace an open debate, not any specific group or viewpoint. No one ever benefit from limiting discussion and limiting a debate. If people don't like what CARE is saying, they should be invited to present too. They too should be invited to present, and present another viewpoint as well. We feel that it's very important to allow for, once again, an open discourse on all issues. Thank you.
Reverend Meyer, and the next five will be Navina Pehar, Tayya Ahmed, Leila Abdalaziz, Imam Askiya, and Iveta Lewis. Welcome, Reverend Meyer.
Thank you. I want to thank the board for engaging in civil discourse like this. It's extremely important, and I would wish that all of the students of Hillsborough County could actually watch and listen to this kind of civic conversation. It's essential for learning the skills of how to cooperate and belong in our world today. My name is Russell Meyer. I live in Tampa Palms. My oldest son graduated from the IB program at King High School. I've been a Lutheran pastor for 28 years in the Evangelical Lutheran Church in America. I'm the Executive Director of the Florida Council of Churches, and I work across North America in various etymenical and interfaith relations. I speak with experience and expertise in how to work with all religions, and we're currently trying to build an interfaith organization in Tampa Bay. I speak in favor of CARE and other competent religiously-aligned groups. They should be able to present their perspectives in our public schools in an informative, non-prostiting manner. As the Supreme Court said, "We should teach about religions rather than practice religions in public schools." The Treaty of Tripoli, signed in 1797, says, "This government is not in any sense founded on the Christian religion. It has no character of empathy against the laws, religion, or tranquility of Muslims." Our actual history is one of turning against newcomers out of fear of the unknown. Germans, Italians, Irish, Jews, Catholics, Eastern Europeans, Chinese, Japanese, Hispanics, Pentecostals have all been targets at some time in our past. These people, their cultures, and their religions have proven to be America's strength. The same can be said of CARE and of other Muslim organizations. They deserve to be heard.
Before I call the next person, Scott Barish, if you're still here, because you didn't use all your time, and I wasn't clear that everybody gets one chance, you can speak now, or why don't we give you one minute now? And then we'll hear the next five. Thank you. Sorry, this is, we don't usually have quite this much excitement.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to quickly point out that this is not a debate about Islam or any other organizations and cultures in the school system. It is about screening who comes in to speak about those cultures. That is it. And the case of CARE, in the Holy Land Foundation case, CARE was named an unindicted co-conspirator in a U.S. District Court where they were unsuccessfully tried to get their name taken off that list. CARE was born out of the IAP, another terrorist organization. I sent each and every one of you a packet with the supporting documentation, evidence that was entered into a court of law, not made-up statements, but evidence in a court of law. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dondosli. Before I call Miss Pehar, if you have a cellphone, beeper, pager, or other noise-maker that you haven't yet turned off, please do so. Navina Pehar, and if I've murdered your name, please correct me.
Okay, hello, my name is Navina. I'm a student at University of Florida and a product of the Hillsborough County School System. I've seen at school board meetings about a speaker that came into AP World History class. A few years ago, I was sitting in AP World History class. What I learned in that class has been invaluable to me. I learned about how the world was shaped and what it is today, and I learned about so many different cultures and religions, my worldview was truly enriched. If I thought I didn't agree with something, or thought something was a little bit shady, I would have asked questions that my own research talked to my parents and friends. I would have loved to have more speakers come and explain the history of their religion in detail. My intelligence would have been insulted if had anyone say I was being brave. My intelligence would have been insulted if had anyone say I was being brainwashed in that class. Watching the Hillsborough School Board meetings, I thought I was catapulted back into the past. I knew that there was still vast amounts of discrimination out there in the world and that no ignorant people exist. Yet the bigotry I witnessed at these school board meetings left me flabbergasted. It's not only that these people are making comments that show their lack of knowledge about the cause they're so adamantly supporting, but their comments are hateful and so insanely ignorant. It all goes back to identity. Everyone does it, categorizing a group of people and assuming they share all the same characteristics, nuances, beliefs, that they all act identically. The missing key here is that we're all individual human beings. You cannot stereotype and categorize. In history, especially in history of America, there's been so much discrimination, which we'd all have learned by now that how important it is to get to know the group of people we're so adamantly against. Your feelings about them might change. During the Civil Rights Movement, there was an incredible amount of discrimination, but there were many non-African Americans that started to realize that freedom was for everyone. Martin Luther King put it in this way in his "I Have a Dream" speech. "The marvelous new Milton Keynes, which has engulfed the Negro community, must not lead us to the destroyed of all white people. For many of our white brothers, as evidenced by their presence here today, have come to realize that their destiny is tied up with our destiny. They have come to realize that their freedom is inextricably bound to our freedom. I realize that my freedom is bound to the freedom of all Americans, no matter their religious affiliation." The bigotry and misinformation that has been on display already twice at these school board meetings is really saddening. We cannot let our education be guided by those that do not respect diversity.
Tayah Ahmed.
Hi, my name's Lyu and I went to the Hillsborough County Public Schools and it's difficult growing up in a community where so many people misunderstand you, misunderstand your faith, and just make fun of you, or call you a terrorist, and all this other nonsense, all streaming from ignorance. It was to the extent that when I was profiled by teachers, quote unquote jokingly, some people who came to me and asked me about what Islam is and why people are making fun of you. It was all due to ignorance and getting to know each other is key to stop this ignorance. The protests against one of the prominent Muslim community leaders and Imam of the local mosque only show the importance of raising our children with proper understanding of diverse faiths that make up our community. I would have had a much easier time growing up in Hillsborough County Public Schools had my classmates knew the truth about my faith and did not judge or stereotype me. Programs like the one Mr. Shibley gave go a long way to foster healthy communication environments, especially for the Muslim students who every day face mistreatment, discrimination, and get attacked because of their faith. It is not ever about which religion is prominent in our public schools. It is about the love we had as friends. We Muslims were a minority in our school, but through friendship and bonds, we understood one another, to the extent that even our teachers accepted our differences because of the influences Christian and Muslims alike had. We as American Muslims realize we are a minority in our great nation and have accepted there are people who are different around us. We implore the people around us to do the same. I want to end with what one student who attended Hassan Shibley's lecture at the public high school had to say. "I attended Hassan Shibley's presentation on Islam and found it perfectly appropriate and it tied into our study in the post-classical era. I don't feel like I was being converted and certainly I don't feel like I was being brainwashed." David Kaiten, founder of the President of the FFA, goes as far to say, "Folks, we are watching Islamization of America in action." Here's the problem, Kaiten can't get it out of his thick skull that Shibley doesn't have the intention of converting or brainwashing us. Now, apparently ridiculous, there's a fine line between preaching and teaching. If ignorance is bliss, then Kaiten must be the happiest man in the world.
Thank you. Navina, Navina, good evening.
My name is Leila Abdelaziz and I'm very honored to be speaking today at the school board meeting. Today I want to share with you guys a unity prayer that I worked, when I worked for my Senator in Washington, D.C., Senator Bill Nelson, I was part of the Muslim Congressional Muslim Association. And I was asked to read this prayer after Representative Giffords was shot and there was a lot of misunderstanding going on in Congress. And I was very happy to have the opportunity to be a part of the Congressional Muslim Sacrors Association and share this prayer.
Now.
The founding fathers crafted a constitution and founding principles that make our United States a unique place in the world that we live in. A place where people of all ethnicities and faiths not only share the ability to truly belong to this nation, but also have the ability to share the same vision, a vision of a nation that upholds and embraces religious rights and personal freedoms. A nation that allows us to reach our common dream by granting us the right to engage in public discourse through a common understanding of our equal constitutional rights. Rights that must not be taken for granted, but instead constantly utilized because they impose upon us the responsibility of political engagement. We must always remember that a democracy is only as effective as the amount of political participation of its people. Now, with that being said, I'd like to briefly speak about the Muslim chapter of the American story. Islam in America has deep roots. One-third of the slaves that arrived on ships hundreds of years ago were Muslim. Thomas Jefferson, one of the founding fathers of this country, owned the Quran and wrote about the many contributions of Islam's civilization, including the creation of our great nation. The frieze atop the Supreme Court of the United States shows a Quran being held as a source of law. In the House of Representatives appear the faces of Islamic lawmakers which every member of Congress can see as he or she votes. The history of Islam in America may be little known but cannot be denied. The ideals set out in the Constitution such as equality, freedom, and democracy have been, I'm almost done, sorry, have been laid in the Quran, making American Muslims responsible. Oh, sorry.
Imam Askiya.
God's peace and blessings be, God's peace and blessings be upon all of you. Those of you who are officials charged with the weight of responsibility that you have, but also pray that God's peace and blessings will be upon everyone who's in this audience and who has found the courage and the time to come out and take a stand on this issue. I think it's important and healthy for our democracy that this debate and this discourse is taking place. I remember back in the late 60s and early 70s when I was a resident here, I knew Dr. Sheldon personally, I knew Reverend Dr. Adrian Lowry personally, I knew Cecile Esrick personally, I knew Sam Grampello personally, and at one time I was one of those who was in fact leading and arousing angry voices to come down and assail the, I see you're not here and you remember me, and come down and assail the Board because of the tension that existed at the time and the difficult and challenging issues that the Board was facing. But some wise person elevated your position in this room so that you could see beyond the emotionalism and beyond the immediacy of the situation and look and think and act and decide long term. I'd like to just make two points very quickly. First of all, I have grandchildren in the Hillsborough County School System. One who will graduate this year with a 4.8 average from Tampa Bay Tech, she's already been accepted into school. Her mother, my oldest daughter, is a devout Christian. My mother has been a member of the same church, the church in which I was raised for 65 years. My sister is a trustee in that church and has been a trustee and a member of that church for 63 years. I have been a Muslim for 40 years and an Imam for 35 years. One final comment. In America, one of the key principles is that you're innocent until proven guilty. An indictment or a sinuation or accusation is not an indictment.
Therefore, thank you so much. I am see Iveta Lewis. The next five are Tom Earl, Rana Bernie, Warren Clark, I'm sorry, Warren Clark, I even know, I can read Clark. Doris Norito, Malik Aziz. Tom Earl.
Hello, my name is Tom Earl. I want to thank you for your time. Education is essential to the formation of a successful society. Diversity is something I value dearly and I believe diversity is an essential element to education. I am here to thank the Board for working to create in our schools a healthy knowledge of world cultures and religions and for including Islam in these efforts. I appreciate your integrity, especially in a time where misunderstandings and misconceptions surround Islam. Cross-cultural interactions are paramount in our united goal of ending all forms of discrimination. Therefore, I sincerely appreciate you supporting our teachers, inviting diverse and educated speakers like Mr. Hassan Shibley from CARE to speak at our schools. And for the record, Hassan Shibley is an educator, he is an Imam, a father, an interfaith advocate, and a U.S. citizen, but he is not a terrorist. Recently, a terrorist, an alleged terrorist, was found in Tampa and the FBI publicly thanked the Muslim community and CARE for this effort. I hear people express their objections are not with Islam but are with CARE, but to me, what I hear is the reiteration of the stereotype that Muslims are terrorists. Islam and other world cultures and religions are not only cultures and religions of the world, but are also cultures and religions of proud U.S. citizens. In conclusion, I applaud the school board for doing their part to promote knowledge in place of ignorance and understanding in place of fear and misunderstanding. Thank you.
Rana Bernie or Rana Bernie? Fortunately, you recognize my mispronunciations of your name.
Hi, good afternoon, it's Rana. I wear a couple of hats and I want to talk to the, I wear a couple of hats and I want to talk to the school board wearing both of them. First of all, I'm a mother. I have three children who have gone through the Hillsborough County School District and I just want to thank the Board for giving them an excellent education that is second to none. Now, our children are our future. I look at them as our future business leaders, our future political leaders, future humanitarians. And now, when they go out into the world, they're going to be dealing with people from all cultures, all races, all nationalities. We want them to rise to the top. We don't want to handicap them by going out into a world where they don't have knowledge of the people that they're dealing with. As part of the educational system, isn't it our duty to give them the tools with which they can, they have the competitive advantage, not to hinder them? We need to show them that the actions of a few misguided people don't necessarily have obtained an entire religious group. We need to show them, we need to teach them, that they need to look beyond the typical stereotypes and get to evaluate a person, the people that they are going to be dealing with, working with, and making business deals and political decisions upon. So if we don't equip them with that knowledge and we don't expose them to everything that's out there, we're doing them a great disservice. Now, secondly, as a law student, I have full faith in our legal system. And if and when the government of the United States decides that CARE is indeed a terrorist organization, which it has not, then of course it should not be allowed into our schools. But that decision has not been made. And I think that we should have trust in the government of the United States, in the FBI, and in the justice system, that we can trust them to talk to our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Warren Clark. Sorry, I couldn't pronounce your name.
Thank you. Glad to be with you all today. I want to tell you this story that I think dramatizes or focuses the way in which we learn from each other when we have the chance to see one another as human beings. About two years ago, I got a call from the Coalition of Amakleke Farm Workers and they were going to have several rallies in Tampa and they were going to bring up 250 farmworkers to Tampa to be in those rallies with other supporters. And the reason why was to ask for a raise in the picking rate for tomatoes that had not been risen since 1979. And they were going to march over to Lakeland to do the same. Problem was that the group that was going to host them and provide them housing that night or let them sleep in their fellowship home floor had backed out. Three days before, Warren, can you find some place for these people to stay? And I called up a lot of the churches and also an Islamic organization that I had worked with and asked. And one after another, after another said, "Sorry, we can't do it, liability," you name it, lots and lots of reasons. And then I got a call from Yur Salam, who is with the Tampa Bay, is the Islamic community of Tampa Bay. And he said, "We've talked about those leaders in our community and Reverend Clark, we will host them." I was so taken back that I said, "Are you sure?" And he said, "Yes." When they came, it was an opportunity for Muslims that were worshiping that night and for farmworkers who were there about to sleep that night to bump into each other and to see, "Oh, these are farmworkers and so this is what they're like. They're just, they're human beings and oh, these are Muslims. Never seen a Muslim before and they're human beings." That's what you all are supporting in this kind of education, is the opportunity for us to see one another as human beings. And that is so important, even of value of us doing this here tonight.
Thank you.
There are humans here and there are humans here. We are all human beings.
Thank you. Iveta.
Well, thank you for letting me come. I don't have any notes. There are a few things that I want to say. I'm an independent journalist. I've recently returned from Bethlehem where I live, this is my fourth time coming from Bethlehem. I want to say I live in a community which is now about 95% Muslim and 5% Christian. As you know, Bethlehem is believed to be the place where Jesus was born. At one time, it was mainly Christian. Most of the Christians have moved out, Muslims have moved in. It's community there. Muslims and Christians get along. I can walk the streets in Bethlehem day and night and be assured that I won't be accosted, that I won't be bothered. Five miles away is Jerusalem. Israeli Jews are not permitted to go into Bethlehem. There's a 30-foot wall between Bethlehem and Jerusalem, two holy cities. Jews do come in and they unite when they can with Christians and Muslims and they are all working at a grassroots organization for peace. You don't hear about it in our media here, however, there are many, many organizations, both Jews, Jewish organizations, Christian organizations, and international organizations working on getting to know one another on nonviolent ways of getting together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barish. Malik Aziz, and before you speak, I will call the last group of speakers. I think a few may not be here, but I'll call all the names and whoever's here can line up. Lois Price, Ahmed Urquid, Kelly Clem Rickon, Terry Kemble, Hassan Shibley, and Nainan Desai. Welcome, Mr. Aziz.
Thank you very much. I thank the Hillsborough County Schools for listening to me. Susan Valdez helped represent my district very well. Wes Chase, I do not have any children in Hillsborough County School, but I've lived in Hillsborough County for in excess of 12 years and paid nearly $50,000 in property taxes. Having said that, hate has entered the public square. Hillsborough County Schools has to defend against hate. And hate will have, you think in its deceptive form that this is not about Islam, this is not about, you know, the Quran, it's not about anything. Yes, it is, absolutely is. And I think that if we look back in history, come from a people who were brought to the shores against their will in shackles. Hate greeted them at the shores over 400 years ago. They hung us from trees and they tightened their ropes. They oiled the chains and they loosened nothing for over 310 years. And we worked from sunup to sundown. And I recognize hate when I feel it. I recognize hate when I see it. Hate changes the stripes from white shirts and white hoods to brown shirts that Hitler put on his, his people, and to red shirts that I've seen in the back of this room and I've felt the hate, the hate produces. And I'm going to tell you something about hate in its deceptive form, that it's an illusion. Hate will have you think that they are not here to darken the public square, but as Nietzsche said, that God is there. Why? Because hate has entered the public square and a cloud has come over Hillsborough County. And I'm counting on you guys to defend against hate and I'll stand with you. Thank you.
Before I call the next speaker, I'm going to ask my friends in communication, do we have someone else? Mr. Hagerty? Do we have someone else that we need to add to the list? All right, let's hear from Ms. Price. Were you here before? Were you here before? No. Okay. I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm trying to...
No, first time.
Welcome, I'm sorry, thank you.
I am Lois Price and I thank you for the opportunity to talk. I am the mother of two Hillsborough County schoolteachers, but I come to you more importantly as the grandmother of two little ones, whom I entrust their care to all of you and who you represent day in and day out. As a member of Friends of Human Rights, Women of Faith, and other civic and religious groups, I have worked with CARE.
Best in the whole county. And I'm here today because, first off, I do want to thank each of you for your service. I know that your first order of concern is for our students and I appreciate that. I am a geography teacher and I feel it's important that we teach our children to respect all religions. We have the opportunity to celebrate cultures, religions, customs throughout the world. And like each of you on this board, I am against any discrimination based on religion. I was raised as a Mormon. My son is serving a mission in Slovakia. I know a thing or two about persecution. I speak to you today not only as a teacher but as a mother. Based on religious beliefs, I think that we should be open to invite all religions to come to speak in our classrooms. But I would ask you to please put a policy in place that would not support the speakers from CARE to come into our classrooms. And the reason I ask for that is because there is clearly ties by the federal government that shows that they are connected to terrorism. I would also ask you to promote patriotism and to promote the United States Constitution. Sharia law would subvert the Constitution of the United States of America. By staying in behalf of women's rights, behalf of my daughters, behalf of fighting against Sharia law and standing for the Constitution, I ask you to please not allow CARE to speak into our public schools. I would invite any Muslim to come to speak to my classroom and talk about the five pillars of Islam. It's a beautiful thing, but I would not want CARE.
If you're here because you don't think that CARE, an organism, organization that has no link to terrorism could be in the classroom, please stand up. Thank you very much. Sit down. Mrs. Azilia, first, I want to thank you for recognizing that there's a problem that needs a solution and for putting 901A on the agenda. We've looked at it. I think it's a step in the right direction and would like to have an opportunity to speak a few more about it. We will continue to come back to these meetings until this issue is resolved. I've heard a lot of speakers from CARE, basically preponers of CARE or speakers on behalf of CARE, and they've done the same thing that a number of you board members have done. And that is, you've avoided, they've avoided, the heart of the issue that is our concern. Our concern is not about Islam. We recommended an organization that has no link to terrorism to come into the classroom with a Muslim organization, the Islamic Association for Democracy. Mrs. Azilia and I spoke about that. You may have missed it in the emails that you've received, but check your emails, it's public record. We aren't here to bash the teachers. So I'm going to ask you, please, if you discuss this after we all speak, address the issue that we're here about, that we're concerned about. CARE has been directly linked to terrorism in the Holy Land Foundation trial. They tried three times to have their names expunged and the judge said there was ample evidence. The only reason there are unindicted co-conspirators is because after the first group of conspirators was convicted on 108 counts of the 108 counts that were brought, the Obama Justice Department quashed any further prosecutions. Mr. Shibley will follow me. I'm sure that's not by accident. He will try and apologize about that and offer you some other alternative. All I can ask you to do is address our concern and look at the facts.
Our final group of speakers, final, final. Mr. Shibley, Nainan Desai, Christina Latchford, Amber Kelly, and my pool, Kabara. Mr. Shibley.
With everything that's been said, I'm just waiting for the marshals to jump out and arrest me at any moment. That's a joke, guys. Before I begin, I would request an extension of my time. I believe there's been three meetings against me and I would request that I do have a few additional moments, maybe five, six minutes. (laughter)
And now, take your two minutes, please.
That's fine. Then I would request my minutes, just to restart. My name is respected board members and community leaders. I would like to begin by thanking you for this opportunity to come and share our thoughts as people of diverse faiths and beliefs, standing united for a diverse, tolerant, and welcome community. My name is Imam Hassan Shibley. That's right, Imam Hassan Shibley. You've heard from those that know me, those that know CARE, those that have known us all our lives, have nothing but good things to say about us. And those that are promoting this hatred and these false allegations never even came to office or came to know us, don't know anything about us. Unfortunately, the reality is there have been so many lies that have been said today. I feel like I have to come out here and prove that the world isn't flat again. You know, that's how outrageous these false statements have been said. Over the course of the past few weeks, our local community has been visited by a small but vocal minority that has insisted on spreading untruths and misinformation about Islam and Muslims living here in Hillsborough. I've been reluctant to come and say anything so as not to set a bad precedent for other minorities. Should every leader of every minority force to stand here and defend against the common misconceptions against themselves? Do we expect African Americans, Japanese, Jews, Catholics, and minorities to defend against xenophobic conspiracy theories leveled against them? Nonetheless, we have come today to show you that those who are more feared and hatred of what they consider the other do not speak on behalf of the majority of your constituents. Tonight, you heard from a number of commentators who have shared with you their thoughts and views about the involvement of Muslims in our community, their commitment that we all share to upholding the law, the commitment to defending liberties established in our Constitution, and condemning the unfortunate stereotyping and hurtful accusations hurled at Muslims like me living peacefully and proudly as practitioners of Islam but also as proud Americans with the pledge of allegiance in our hearts to our nation under God with a sworn commitment to liberty and justice for all citizens and residents. You have heard demagoguery today and hateful comments. And these comments are coming at me. Why? Because in my eyes, in the eyes of the vast majority of Muslims across our great nation and land, to practice Islam, to be a Muslim means to be a proud American. We see no difference because by definition, our religious values are the same as American values. My opponents disagree with me about these things and thus they have targeted me and falsely slandered me. Muslim extremists have called me an infidel and these guys have called me a terrorist.
Excuse me. I'm running this meeting and I said I would give him 30 seconds more. We have sat and listened respectfully. I would ask you to continue to sit and listen respectfully. You have 30 seconds.
I just want to say that Muslim extremists like Al-Zamakh have called me an infidel. These guys are calling me a terrorist if any of these things were true. Come on, really? I wouldn't be standing here. I wouldn't be a proud member of the bar. For the past 10 years, Muslims have had to deal with these kinds of false accusations. For decades in Islam, 9/11, we have stood tall silently and held in the tears in our eyes, out of love for our countrymen, by which I mean our fellow Americans, and that is because of Islam's teaching of compassion. I'm here today to bridge the gap forming in our society and help bring about understanding. We cannot let those that are promoting hatred and bigotry raise a flag of victory over our schools. Thank you and God bless you. God bless America.
Ladies and gentlemen of the school board, thank you for the opportunity. I'm Nainan Desai and I'm a Hindu, the third major religion of the world. And I'm also the president of the Hindu Temple of Florida in Tampa. I would like to bring out here that diversity is extremely important in our education. Although I come from a country and of Hindus where probably the world's highest persecution ever took place for the Hindus, we have always espoused diversity and equality. We strongly recommend that all the religions be afforded, as a matter of fact, anchored, the school system be anchored to require that speakers from different religions come and speak to their class. Because what we have found is that our textbooks continue with the misconceptions that have been ingrained over the years. And it's not the fault of the students, it's not the fault of the parents, it's not the fault of the teachers. It's been going on for several years and it's, what we are finding out is that that's quite shocking. And allowing different religious groups to come and present and explain, it is a great opportunity to the people who are practicing the religion, to explain what the truth is. Once again, I represent here Hindus and there are several other religions that are from India, there are Jainism, there is Sikhism, there's Buddhism. And I recommend that all the religions be afforded opportunity to come and present their, explain to the youth, explain to our students. As many speakers have said, that our students are going to go out and be the leaders of the world. And the only way they can be is they understand all the cultures and all the religions.
Thank you. (applause)
Mr. Board, thank you very much for taking the time to listen to everybody. I do appreciate it. My name is Christina Latchford. I am the mother and the spouse of a 27-year veteran in the military, just recently returned home here after retiring within the military. My husband has deployed twice in the war on terror. So I stayed home and taken care of children under severe disabilities. I think it's important, just as you would, I saw your diligence in looking over your contracts and the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted and who's going to sign first and all these things. And anytime you want to hire somebody to do something like work on your house, you vet them. And you try to find out really what they're about and what is their record and can I count on them? And I stand here to say and to note that CARE does have ties to terrorism. CARE is merely an instrument for the camel's nose getting under the tent. I do not have hate in my heart, but I do recognize an ideology that is damaging and I would not subject my children to it. And if you insist on allowing them to come in, do your due diligence. And I would say to every one of you who are members of CARE, will you sign a statement in front of these people in this whole community that says you renounce Hamas and Hezbollah as terrorist organizations prior to entering our school? And Mr. Shibley, your instance is duly noted. If you can do that, because I have dined with Muslims, I have traveled and I have met them and I understand them, but that ideology, there is no change in it. And once you get the camel's nose under the tent, there is no turning back. Do your due diligence. Thank you.
Amber Kelly.
Thank you for having the opportunity to speak. First of all, I want to say I'm a graduate of the Florida Public Schools. I attended USF for my undergraduate degree. And I do understand the Sunshine State requirements. I just want to address, first of all, for anybody that says this is a hate message, I have friends that are Muslim. I've had friends that are Muslim for more than 10 years. I have lived in Muslim countries. I have studied Muslim countries. I have worked on federally funded programs in Muslim countries. This is not about hate. I understand this is not an attack on Muslims. This is a concern with the organization that was invited into the school. Somebody before me said that we need the right people teaching Islam and I would agree. I understand this is a Sunshine State requirement. We need to address, we need tolerance. We should, you know, if you're a Christian, Jesus taught, you should love your neighbor. We need to do that. We need to practice that. We need to understand that. On the other hand, we're talking about an organization, you know, that doesn't necessarily have that same goal. One of the other speakers mentioned non-proselytizing nature, that it's okay to teach as long as we're not proselytizing. But one of the joint founders of CARE said, "Muslim Americans have a duty to deliver the message of Islam and Islam isn't in America to be equal to any other faith but to become dominant." That's proselytizing. I'm willing to admit that some of these members of CARE over here, they're not terrorists. They do good works. They're good members of the community. But we're talking about what the organization itself was founded for. What are its principles? What does it want? Lastly, like I said, CARE doesn't have to be all bad. If they are indeed the PR branch of Hamas or the Muslim Brotherhood, they are going to do good things in the community. That would further their goal. Lastly, I just want to say that CARE is not the only Muslim organization that could come in and speak. Why does it have to be this specific organization? Thank you.
The last speaker is Vipul Kabarya. Welcome, Mr. Kabarya.
Honorable school board members and respected audience members, I'm Vipul Kabarya. I'm a physician who practices pain management as a specialty of anesthesiology in Hillsborough County. When I listen to all the comments, I hear a lot of subjectivity. So I wanted to bring some fresh viewpoint. Being a physician, I look for objective solutions. And when I looked at this subject, I came across a teacher's guide to religion in the public school that has been published by First Amendment Center and has been endorsed by American Association of School Administrators, National Association of Elementary School Principals, National Council of Social Studies, National PTA, National School Boards Association, and various religion organizations, including Christian Legal Society, Council on Islamic Education, and various American Jewish Congress, American Jewish Committee. I would like to present this guide to the board members. I have two copies, which I will be mentioning a few things, but it is a good reading to bring the objectivity to this subject. This guide begins with citation from the US Constitution regarding First Amendment and has devised several questions that may be asked by the teachers. But main important objective aspect I would like to read, that the school's approach to religion is academic, not devotional. The school strives for student awareness of religion but does not press for student acceptance of any religion. The school sponsors study about religion and not the practice of religion. The school may expose students to a diversity of religious view but may not impose any particular view.
Thank you, sir. The time is up. And we have one more speaker whose name I didn't get. Let's all come up and identify yourself and we'll give you two minutes too.
Michael Kabria. I think a lot of the message you're hearing is off focus, so it's going to focus here and that is we're going to get background checks on the speakers and background check on the message. We have a process in place, sir, that you fill out an application. It's a detailed application. They even want your social security number, do a background check. I don't know if these speakers that I've talked before have gone through the background check in school, but we really need to be careful who we allow to speak. And as to the message that they're bringing, if you've been to the Middle East as a tourist and you hear the call to prayer, it sounds lovely. It's a sing-songy message that you're lulled in. It's beautiful. But when you hear the translation, oftentimes, they end the call to prayer with, "Kill the infidel." Now, this is not the kind of attitude we need to allow into the school system. We need to vet the messenger and vet the message. We have a process in place. We need to strengthen it. And we're not about the worldview or teaching a world-class education. We're about teaching an American education. That's what we're founded on. That's what kept our country strong through all these hard times. Thank you.
So, board members, I said we would take a break at 6:00. My hunch is our discussion will last more than eight minutes. Okay, could you talk to us about the document that you have provided that is the information agenda item?
Yes. You know, I've had the opportunity to speak with you, Ms. Olson, and others on the board as well as with teachers and principals. And there's been certainly...
the board, as well as with teachers and principals, and there's been, certainly, a number of voices have come to the board in previous weeks and this evening, a number of voices who've talked to us about the issues relating to having speakers come into our classrooms. And I will say, I think that, that our principals and our teachers are looking for the opportunity to have speakers come into their classrooms, but feel like they would like some guidelines. I've had specific conversations with teachers and specific conversations with principals about this, and their position has been, let us know some things that you think need to be reviewed as we're looking at guest speakers. And I have, over the period of time that we've had these discussions, specifically mentioned in either individual conversations with all of you, or in the board meeting, that it is very important that we target the particular Sunshine State standards and curriculum area, and look at that. In fact, our original discussion specifically identified that in many of our courses, that there are specific references to various religious groups. And so, with that in mind, I put together the 901A, which is an information item for the board, so that in response to the requests the principals had, and after discussion with you and with our teachers, that we would put something that would guide them in the determination of the speakers that they might be interested in having in their classroom, and also give the principals kind of a plan that they should, they should look at when a teacher comes to them and says, "I'm thinking that I'd like to have a speaker for this topic." You'll note in there that I specifically say that the district instructional division, because I think from a single teacher's perspective, it's important that we have an opportunity to have a teacher say, "I'm doing this particular topic, is there someone from the community?" And let's take the example, since many of these are going to appear in the social studies curriculum, let's take the example of Dr. Dennis Holt. Dennis is with us tonight. It would be very feasible for a teacher to say, "I'm interested in having a speaker come in to speak to a particular item in their curriculum," and Dennis to say, "You know, I know that there's been a speaker in another classroom, one of our other teachers, they were very pleased with it." And Dennis could then connect them with that person. Now, I will say to you, I think there's some topics that appropriately, we might not have speakers whose credentials match our curriculum. And I think Dennis then could say, "You know, I don't think that that's a good, we don't have somebody that we really feel is, has the credentials to go in and have a discussion, presenting information to our students that matches the agenda that they have in their curriculum and in their Sunshine State standards, new generation Sunshine State standards." So, 901 goes through that, talks about the instructional division acting as a resource for teachers, that teachers will go to principals and provide the name, credentials, and the subject matter, and the teachers will work with the guest speakers on the anticipation of what would be covered in their classroom, including the teacher's desired outcomes of the presentation, aligning it to those next-generation Sunshine State standards in the course curriculum. I do think it's important for us to recognize that we have professionals who are teachers in our schools, and that we have professionals who are administrators in our schools, and that they, with the use of these guidelines, can make decisions about the appropriateness of the speakers coming in. They always have access to the instructional staff, who would be, I believe, great resources, and in fact, are great resources for these kinds of questions that come up from teachers and administrators. So, with all that in mind, Ms. Olson, we put this together and presented it for information for the board this evening, so that we can move forward on this. I want to point out to you, and I think there were several speakers that said that the discourse that came from this was a positive thing. I would absolutely agree with you. My only concern, my only concern is that we have so many things that we have to target that are really closely related to our educational goals, not that in fact, having guest speakers in our classrooms aren't important, they are. But I think we need to accept that we've heard from the community, and accept that there is a place for speakers in our classrooms, provide the guidelines for our teachers, for our principals and our teachers, and then move forward with that. So, with that in mind, I present 901 as an information item to the board.
Thank you, Ms. Yelea. I'm sure a number of board members would like to speak, those of you who are left. Ms. Griffin, and then Ms. Valdez.
Thank you, and I've, I've been listening and writing, and I've not spoken out on this item in any of the meetings that we've had, and tried to hear the entire community as this discussion has taken place. And I have to say that this 901A came as quite a shock to me, and has kind of muddied this conversation. And 901A, and I, I'm not texting, I'm not, I just take notes on my phone, I have children who have taught me how to be a little bit good with technology, but, um, this is not, in my opinion, I'm just going to start with this, this should not be an information item. I think that this is crossing the line into policy, and should have been a decision by this board, and initiated by this board, to have this conversation and create a policy surrounding this. So, that, I think, is the discussion that we need to have around this board at some point, because this is crossing into the line of policy, and that's our job. We have let teachers know that we support them, we have been very, very open about that. I know that you're saying that there are teachers that have asked for some guidance, but I've heard teachers say that they want to have some kind of autonomy in their classroom too, and the trust of this board, to be able to bring speakers into their classroom that they know that they have worked with in the past, and quite possibly, they could be a part of the list that the district provides. But I think that centralizing it is going to push some people out of our classrooms that may be there right now. And as much as I support site-based management, what I'm concerned about is that our principals will have a little bit too much say in this process, and that one part of our community will hear a different part, or a different message than another part of our community. That our kids in one part of this county will not hear what children in another part of our county hear. So there's a little bit too much freedom in that, and that's where the board needs to step in and set the guidelines on. So, again, I take it back to what I said in the beginning, that this is a board decision, this is not an information item that should be decided by you, the superintendent, and all due respect, I can appreciate the difficult position that you're in, we are sitting up here too, we are being lambasted by the community, so I think that we all signed on for this job, we just need to, as some people say often, put our big girl and big boy pants on and deal with it. What concerns me about this particular agenda item is in the language, "Speaker should be used to educate and inform, not advocate." I agree with that. This is where I start to disagree. Therefore, representatives of advocacy groups should be considered inappropriate. That sounds like a policy to me. The unintended consequences that could come from that are that we are going to exclude a lot of organizations. And I just went on and started, off the top of my head, writing down advocacy organizations. PTA, National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, Florida Kid Care, the Hillsborough Education Foundation, Community Tampa Bay, the Children's Board, Tampa Jewish Community Center and Federation, the Federation of Indian Associations of Tampa Bay, pastors on patrol, Advocacy Center for Persons with Disabilities, Center for Family Health, Hispanic American Coalition, Children's Advocacy Center, Children's Justice Center, Family and School Support Team, USF Advocacy Program, American Art Therapy Association, Autism and PDD Support Network, Tampa Lighthouse for the Blind, Achieve Tampa Bay, and the list goes on, Tampa Jewish Community Center, Agency for Persons with Disabilities, Best Buddies. These are all advocacy groups. So this is a really, really slippery slope that we're walking on when we say, and we're therefore excluding advocacy groups. This was a discussion that we could have had and hammered out the details of this. So, I would like to have a conversation as a board about this. Now that it's being pushed, we need to have a conversation about this, because this language is not okay with me. Martin Nimoyer, a German pastor and anti-communist who supported Hitler's rise to power, said, "First, they came for the communists, and I did not speak out because I was not a communist. Then they came for the trade unionists, and I did not speak out because I was not a trade unionist. Then they came for the Jews, and I did not speak out because I was not a Jew. Then they came for me, and there was no one left to speak." This has, regardless of how many people stand at that podium and say, "This is not us against them, this is not about the Muslims." This is. This has become a really, really divisive message in our community. I am a woman of strong faith. There is not a day that I wake up and I thank God for what I have, for my family, for my friends, for the life that I have been afforded. There's not a day that I don't go to sleep and pray for my children's safety, for my friends, and give my thanks for the life that I've been given, and I'm going to say this publicly because I have the microphone. I pray every day to walk in God's will. I have prayed long and hard about this. And I know that I am not supposed to live and walk this earth and do what I do in the position that I'm in and allow a hateful message to continue. I watched the young lady stand up here and say she was going to give a prayer, and I heard people shout out, "No," that they wouldn't even listen to what she said. I watched someone put their hands over their ears and plug their ears. I watched people get up en masse and walk out of this room because a young woman said she was going to say a prayer, and she was Muslim. When do we learn from each other if we don't listen to each other? How can we learn about one another if we don't open up our ears, our hearts, and our minds? This has become a message of us and them. I stand with the entire community, not one part of this community. Should we have a conversation about what groups come in, how we have a policy? Maybe we should. But I don't want to exclude groups because of innuendo. And I've read all of the emails. I want to also caution this board where the great American teaching is concerned. If we start looking at screening every single speaker that comes into our schools, we don't do that for the great American teaching. That's one of the greatest days that we have in this district, that is one of the most wonderful days that we have to reach out and have people from the community come in and teach our kids about things that they might not know. And we don't do that. Are we going to start there? What's the criteria? Where do we draw that line? If you start drawing those lines and you have very specific criteria, we are going to miss some diamonds in the rough. We are not going to have speakers come into our classes that may give our students a lesson that they really could use. I'm going to end my comments there.